I call to order the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole for January 28th, 2025. Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember O'Rear.
Here.
Councilmember Rup.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here. Please rise as you're able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of our October 22nd, 2024 Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as written. At this time, we will go to citizen comments. We have two people who have signed up this evening. First up is Mr. Jordan Dotson. If you would, come to the podium and state your name and address, and your countdown will begin.
Hello, City Council. Like I mentioned, my name is Jordan Dotson.
If you would, Mr. Dotson, state your address, please.
Oh, yeah. 518 Pointe Edia Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep. So I'm a resident of Pointe Edia, right here across the way. Kind of the historical neighborhood of Simpsonville, you could say. We just moved in there at the beginning of last year. And I just wanted to bring to the city and the council's attention an issue we have with some storm drains, more so the lines that come out of the storm drains and run to the creek here. Along my property line and my neighbor's property line, there's where the drain runs, it's concrete pipes, and the pipes are separating, making two sinkholes that are starting to get pretty big. And you can look down at them and see the concrete pipe and where it's separating. I'd say they're probably at least 40, 50 years old. I don't know when they were put in. So with that, we've got a baby on the way later this year. My neighbors are elderly that live on the other side of me. Obviously, kind of a danger, a safety issue at some point with those being there. And I guess it's my understanding that the city's only responsible and Public Works is responsible within, I think it's five or 10 feet of the road. So this is obviously, I think, probably 20 to 30 feet from the road, but it is within the easement. But I think, I guess I've been told it's not the city's responsibility, even though it's a concrete pipe that the city owns for the city drainage, and the road is the city's and the drains the city's. But I'm supposed to fix this pipe that's a big concrete pipe that's in my yard and has some drainage, obviously the sinkholes. And I guess to add to that, I think Pointe Edia has a lot of drainage issues as a whole. I think you guys are probably aware, but all these buildings probably don't help as everything flows into Durbin Creek and out to the reservoirs. So obviously, it's hard or probably impossible, extremely expensive for me to fix that myself unless I, you know, Band-Aid it, cover the pipes up, then it's just going to cause other problems. And obviously, we don't want to do that because we don't need more drainage issues. But I would say it's imperative to the city streets that either, you know, I fix it or you guys fix it, not only to help with the drainage issues, but from a safety standpoint for not only me and my family and my future daughter, as well as my elderly neighbors that are right beside me. So I know it's a small issue, but it doesn't mean it's not a danger and it's not important. And I just wanted to bring that to your all's attention, to, I guess, essentially ask that you potentially reconsider that policy around the storm drains, at least when it's in an easement and the city technically owns those drainage lines within Pointe Edia and the city as a whole right around here. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Next up is Brittany Mims.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Mims. My address is 5 Delgado Way. I moved here a couple of years ago with my family from Alabama, and since then, I have been coaching rec softball out at Heritage Park for the little girls. Did a year or a season of 8U, and I've done two seasons of 10U, and I'm going to do another one this spring. And I think the reason that I'm here tonight is to clarify some of the responses, I guess, that I had received from the Parks and Recreation Directors. I have asked for some more like dedicated field time for the little girls and received responses that were vague and just, I guess, weren't... I wasn't able to really get clarification as to why we couldn't have a dedicated field time. Also, I asked for lights to be turned on for the little girls to be able to practice this month and next since we're about to start rec. And that was also something that I was told couldn't happen. So I'm kind of wondering why the lights cannot be turned on at Heritage Park for that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is their policy of first come, first served. So obviously, if you have children, you understand that it's difficult to get them to practices in different sports and events and things. So telling my parents that are, you know, I have 10 sets of parents, 10 little girls that play for me, that we're not quite sure what time we'll be practicing and if we'll have a field, but we're going to try to meet up there and practice, that just doesn't cut it. So I'd reached out to the directors, Chad, and as well as Chris Elidge, to see about getting some dedicated field time and was told that that's not possible. So I know that we had spoken to the mayor, Mr. Shoemaker, also had spoken to Robbie about this as well. And it's an ongoing thing that I feel like should be discussed as to how we could better dedicate time to our young ladies' sports teams up there. Like I said, I'm coaching now for the fourth season in a row. I've started a travel softball team. I'd really love to have some dedicated field time for these girls because they're all drawn out of Simpsonville Rec. I know Malden, Greer Fountain, and they all have travel teams that are based out of their rec departments. And that's exactly what we're trying to, or I'm trying to start up with this nice gentleman over here, John Harris. And our daughters both play. And, you know, it's hard in general to coach all the things that we coach. It's not super easy, but, you know, we don't get paid. And we'd just love to have some clarification from the city as to how we can better, you know, help our girls to have dedicated field time, explain to our parents, you know, that the lights may or may not be on. I mean, we need, we need just a little bit of help with that, and that's why I'm here this evening. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mims. That concludes our citizen comments. Item 6, staff reports. We'll begin with our community relations report from Justin Campbell, our community relations specialist.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So the priorities for community relations for the first quarter of 2025 are going to be the website project completion, music series and food truck rodeo preparation, and an e-newsletter reboot. As far as the website, the launch was very successful. Corrections and fine tuning continue as I meet with department heads and get fixes from staff. Any inaccuracies or issues that council or staff or department heads find, please send to me, send all of them to me. And if you could include a link, that would be helpful. For the music series, this is one of my favorite events of the year. That's going to be starting in June. We're doing something a bit different this year. We are excited about this being our seventh year, and so we want to change it up a bit, maybe shortening the concert season so that we can have more money per band to get, you know, the best bands, and doing movies later in the year. And the licenses for getting a movie are much cheaper than in what it costs to, you know, $1,500 for a band versus maybe $300 to license a movie. So it'll be like the Simpsonville Music Series and Food Truck Rodeo, Simpsonville Movie Series and Food Truck Rodeo. And the movie series by Parks and Rec for kids will continue. This music movie series would be geared more towards, you know, adolescents and adults, maybe like PG-13 style. And for the e-newsletter, I think having four quality additions a year may require less content. Doing, you know, 10 to 15 pages at a time is a task, and I want to get in as much information as possible. But I think I'm going to have to reconfigure, reformat, get a little creative with the format to make sure that we have that newsletter quarterly. We did not have it in quarter four of this past year. Super busy time, I think, with the municipal complex. That was an unusual time. But I have noticed in previous quarters that it's often come down to the wire, or it hasn't been what I've wanted it to be in terms of quality. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear.
The website, Ghost is, we have a kind of a two-year deal with them, correct?
They are part of one budget and then the next budget. And then we also have a monthly subscription with them to help us maintain the site.
Okay. So they do help maintain, and for the first two years, they're kind of all in it with you?
I'm not sure about a two-year limit. I think as long as we have the website, we'll have that monthly subscription.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is John Derby, our planning director with the economic development report. Mr. Derby, if you would, move the microphone up, please.
Sorry, Justin. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is the November, December, and January staff report for planning and economic director, economic development, excuse me. Typical this time of year, we do have a lot of lower development coming in, annexations, rezonings, and site developments coming in. So it's pretty typical of what you see on that staff report. We'll get a better indication how it's developing come the spring. Planning commission, nothing in November, December, and January. We did meet for finistrations requirements. That is a facade requirement to alter design to not meet the requirements of windows. We had no BZA meetings. Currently, staff is working with the conference of plan valuation and LDR updates currently in the background. So those are two things that will be coming to you later this year. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Derby. Item 6C, financial report from Finance Director Christine Farino. Director Farino.
Good evening, Mayor and council. A few highlights from the December financial report. General fund revenues for December were $1.9 million with a year-to-date total of $4.9 million, which is 20% of the budget. December expenses were $1.2 million with a year-to-date total of $23.5 million, which includes $11 million towards the municipal complex. That puts us at 39% of the budget, and that is without the municipal complex expenses. Sewer fund revenues for December were $182,000 with a year-to-date total of $1.1 million, which is 51% of the budget. December expenses were $67,000 with a year-to-date total of $399,000, which is 32% of the budget. Hospitality and accommodation revenues for December were $453,000 with a year-to-date total of $3.2 million, which is 81% of the budget. December expenses were $55,000 with a year-to-date total of $857,000, which is 45% of the budget. The Public Works Enterprise Fund revenues for December were $278,000 with a year-to-date total of $313,000, which is 20% of the budget. Expenses for December were $108,000 with a year-to-date total of $584,000, and that's 45% of the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Farino. Item 6D, city administrator report. Diana Graceley, city administrator. Can you go over your report, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. You have a copy of my report in front of you. I just want to hit a few highlights, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those. Regarding the municipal complex, the buildings are complete. Just a few little punch list items left to go. As you can see outside the windows, well, it's too dark now, but Phase 2 is underway with the remainder of the project, which includes the completion of the park. I also keep this list in here about funding sources for the project in case you are asked those questions by your constituents. The downtown revitalization and streetscape project continues to inch closer to letting for bid. It's been a long process. I know with the design, we are currently at DEHEC for land disturbance permitting, and I am meeting with several property owners along with our civil engineer to talk about easements that we need to acquire in order to get this project underway. I mentioned the city park improvements. Phase 2 is underway, and we expect total completion on or about April 1st. We did get money donated from Greenville Water to help with the cost of the water wall that we're installing at the entrance to the park. Swamp Rabbit Trail, Charlene Carter has helped me with this project to try to get the route established completely. We seem to have run into obstacles on various routes that we've tried, and I think we have one now that DOT is comfortable with because it does involve crossing Fairview Road and crossing South Industrial. So we do need their buy-in on that. And they have been very good about working with us on getting across Highway 14 at Heritage Park. They have willingly decided they'll put a traffic signal in there, which is good, not only for trail users but for motorists as well, especially people leaving the park after athletic events and things like that. So it'll be easier to get out of the park when people are using Heritage Park. It'll be a safer way for them to exit that drive. We continue with our sewer improvements. We are, we'll have a matter coming before you probably next month regarding a line that goes under 385 that we've been working on, trying to cap because it is highly substandard, and we're hoping it will last until we can get this other solution implemented. Storm cleanup, I'm sure you may have some questions for Director West when he's up here, but I will tell you that I think Public Works has done an amazing job with storm cleanup. If you look at other communities, certainly, you know, unincorporated areas of the county, there's still a lot of work left to do, and we've essentially completed all of the debris pickup. We are now working with FEMA on correcting some culverts that have undermined the road because of the storm, and so we are currently in preliminary design to correct those issues. I do have a matter on the agenda regarding the FEMA public assistance program, and we'll get around to that when that item comes up. I've included for you the list of resurfacing for this coming year. We don't know now where we are in terms of the schedule. The county does put all of the, well, the county transportation committee puts all of the road resurfacing into one contract, and that means they set the schedule to. So I'm hoping we'll be on the spring resurfacing list, but it could be as late as fall before we get around to our roads. And then there's a list of events happening at the Arts Center and other events throughout the city that I have included in my report. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear.
Thanks, Minister Graceley. I appreciate it. Couple of real, one kind of funny, but the other one serious. You requested that Senator Turner and Representative Vaughn an additional $13 million for the streetscape. Realistically, if you had to, I mean, I hate to ask you to speculate, but could we get the $13 million? Are we just going to get a portion of that? Or...
It is my hope that we will. And, you know, we've put this request in the past two years, and they've given us $1 million each year. And Representative Bannister, who is the Chair of Ways and Means in the House, gave some assurances last year that he would take care of Simpsonville's request the coming year. So, you know, we have an excellent request in terms of, a lot of the work we're doing is on state roads, and so, you know, we believe that the state should pay their share of these improvements, that they're not just for the city's benefit, but they're also for SCDOT's benefit.
And I guess my funny one now. Is any way I can get a waiver on that daddy-daughter dance age waiver?
You'll have to talk to Ms. Average about that. That's her event.
I miss taking my daughters to those.
Yeah. That is a great event, and it always sells out, and it's probably already sold out. So I don't think she would even be able to work on your waiver because there are no more tickets available.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings.
On the Swamp Rabbit Trail, do we have a rough estimate of cost for, to get from where we are now to Heritage Park? I know the funds we have now basically are dedicated to engineering and design, it's like. What's it going to cost as far as actually putting the trail in? Do we have an idea?
Because of some of the route changes, it changes the cost, too. And we, I don't have an updated cost estimate, but probably will by next month. So I'll put that in the report if we have it by then. I'll put all of the engineering route and studies and cost estimate in there if I have those documents by next month.
And will there be any elevated crosswalks involved in the crossovers?
It's not our desire to do those. Now, they will be marked, and there may be a slight grade elevation just to differentiate between the road and the trail crossing, but no bridges or anything like that.
Thirdly, the trailhead we discussed there, it's a termination point that we have now. Do we have all the necessary allowances to go ahead with that when we get the funding to do that at this point?
The trailhead at...
We talked about something that...
Fairview.
Fairview.
Yeah. So we do have a property owner who has indicated that he will be donating that parcel to us. He wanted to do a site plan that he could give to his appraiser to get, you know, the highest appraised value for that, although it is a donation, but it would be a tax benefit to him to be able to, you know, have some tax credit for that donation. So I know he's done that work, and I'm hoping that we'll hear from him anytime about the closing document for that so that it would become the city's property, and I would be able to sign the tax form for his account.
And is that design work that we're doing now, is that going to include that?
It is. Well, to a certain extent. I mean, it involves the crossing, but the rest of that is a pocket park that I think we can do a lot of the work through Public Works on. And Blake Sanders had given us a sketch of what could fit on that space and the layout and how it could work. So we do have at least a preliminary drawing of that pocket park, and, you know, there may be some revisions to that. For engineering purposes, we continue to move forward with that. What I didn't want to do is hold the design part of the project up, you know, waiting for all of these other things to be sorted out because we really do need to get this project going.
Well, as you know, we have a Golden Strip Trails Group that volunteers from the community have been involved in before, and we're talking about getting that up and running again since we're closer to reality now. We have some funds in our account that we, I think, would be able to possibly donate to that, to that cause, and possibly raise some more funding for the trailhead. So I'd be very interested in seeing that.
I think that's a great idea, excellent use of those funds.
On the, the, well, let me go to this, on the resurfacing of the roads, you indicated that they're scored on a basis of 85 to 100, with 100 being the worst and 85 being the minimum. Do we have individual scores available to council on those roads?
I know that Director West was working with our part-time city engineer on assessing the road conditions again.
Yeah, he has a spreadsheet with all that on there, broke down by ward, broke down by street.
Could you provide that to council?
Sure. Sure. We'll get it to you.
I think it would be good to. From my own reasoning, I think to get an idea of what an 85 is versus a 100, that sort of thing.
Okay.
As I drive about town, everybody's a 100, you know...
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody that lives on the street is a 100. That's for sure.
Just to give us a little better feel for what, you know, where the breakpoint is, I guess.
Sure. We can do that.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Finally, on the work being done on, I have lost my page here, but the, here we go, I got it, I'm back. Storm cleanup.
Yes.
The engineering underway on projects impacting Forest Park Drive, North Almond, South Almond, and Bondwood. Does that have any relation to the study that we authorized a while back for stormwater cleanup plans for the whole city? And if so, are we looking at the whole city or are we looking at just part of it at this point?
We are currently working on, the acronym is BRIC, and it's a funding source that would pay for citywide stormwater study. Obviously, our focus needs to be on Durbin Creek and on Rocky Creek, since those are the main areas where we have issues. But if we're fortunate enough to get that grant, then we would be able to use the set aside that we have for stormwater. Councilmember Pinkerton had made that motion, and it passed last year, maybe in the fall, to use the budgeted stormwater money to pay the local match for that project. So they just opened up the grant cycle. We kept asking and asking. We didn't want to miss it, and they actually just opened that up, I think, week before last. So we're working on that right now.
So the area on Rocky Creek in the Westwood area is under consideration as well?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And as you and I discussed, the pump track, which almost immediately got destroyed after we put it in...
Wouldn't we replace it? We're not having a set abortion again.
Right. Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Pointe Edia is go to 105. Just to follow up on the stormwater engineering, can you elaborate a little bit more about what we're actually doing on engineering? I've seen them out there doing survey, but what's the process? What happens next? Are we going to put this out to bid? Is the city taking care of that? So could you elaborate a little bit on that in a timeline?
So the Forest Park culvert and the North Almond culvert had significant damage as a result of Hurricane Helene. So those projects will be included with our FEMA reimbursement that we're doing. The South Almond and Bondwood, there is a separate pot of money that we will be applying for. It's the FEMA 404 program to address those issues. So, you know, we're hopeful that we would be able to get those funds, and there is a limited, the engineering work that's happening for that. We haven't stopped just because we don't have the funding in place right now. We have asked the consulting engineers to include a limited stormwater study for that basin because, well, we've talked about this before, you know, we could upsize a pipe at South Almond, but it would put water, put more water on residents downstream. So we have to do this limited stormwater study to make sure that we're not causing someone else bigger problems. And so that's happening right now. And as soon as I have all of those reports, I'll be happy to share those with council.
So, yeah, obviously, the North Almond one would have to come first, and I know I've seen what it's done, but, so it's contingent on FEMA funding at the moment?
North Almond and Forest Park are. Because that's damage that resulted directly from the storm. So that will be included in our FEMA reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rup.
I think I might need Director West at the podium, too. I'm not sure if this is a you question or him question, so between the two of you, maybe you can help me. This gentleman that spoke tonight, I hate to put you on the spot, have you been out to the... Have you been out to this gentleman's home?
We've been to Jordan's house. We've been to several houses around town with a similar situation. And Director Derby and I have had this conversation too. There's easements on a plat, but it may not be a city easement, and therein lies the problem. So, in that right-of-way, we work, on a sewer easement, we work. The issue is, our concern is, once you do for one, you have to do for all, which of course, in Public Works, we don't mind doing whatever it takes per policy, but the policy is set by you guys. And that's always been our response, is that that policy is black and white, and any deviation from that kind of opens Pandora's Box.
So, the policy...
The policy states that if it's in a city right-of-way or easement, we'll work on that stormwater drainage structure. If it's on the side of the road, if it crosses a sewer easement, we work on it on sewer easements just for the simple fact, you know, you have a RCP pipe above a old clay line, and when it collapses, it pushes down on the sewer and damages the sewer main, which is an environmental problem at that point. But the policy has been in place, and it's kind of like that for us. It's like that from Malden Fountain Inn, say, to South Carolina, Greenville County. They all have a similar policy that all drainage work is done within the right-of-way on by whatever entity that is, city, state, or county.
So, the structure that collapsed is city, city property?
If it's in the city right-of-way. And that depends on what part of town you're in. Point Setia has multiple right-of-way widths. Now, it's pretty standard, I think, John, when they come in for a neighborhood, it's a standard right-of-way. It may be 10 feet on Astor, and it may be 5 feet on Point Setia Drive, and we just measure all GIS map on that.
So, y'all have been out there. Where have we left it? This is the first time I'm hearing about it.
Well, we've left it, just like you said, you know, it's the policy, we don't come off that right-of-way. And we've had, like I said, similar conversations with residents in Wagon Creek before, Westwood. It's just always been the conversation we've had, and it's not a very popular conversation, but again, that's what the policy states, is a city easement, not just an easement.
If I may clarify just a little bit, when he's saying city easement, he means a recorded document that shows the exact location of the easement. We're prohibited from working on private property. And so, in a lot of these more established neighborhoods that have been here for a long time, when the developer built those, you know, it was before these water quality standards that required that you pipe to a stormwater retention pond. You know, the neighborhood you live in obviously was built after these water quality policies and laws were put in place, and so now developers are required to pipe all the way to a retention pond. And unfortunately, in Point Setia and other neighborhoods that are well-established, those laws were not in place then, and so the pipe just, it might go, I think he mentioned 20, 25 feet off the public right-of-way, and then it terminates. And so, it becomes an issue for one property owner or maybe two that are in between that. I wish there was something we could do, but we can't get an easement for that. And as Director West mentioned, you know, it would be a very expensive proposition for the city too, to replace all of those. Now, maybe with the stormwater study, you know, we might be able to, as we're addressing stormwater issues, because the main stormwater issues affect the more established neighborhoods. Maybe we could include some of that work in, you know, what we're doing overall with the culverts in the street and, you know, dredging streams to make them deeper, you know, cleaning silt out. That could possibly be incorporated into that.
If I can just make sure that we are getting clarity here, what I'm hearing, but nobody has said specifically, is the existence of a culvert underground on your property does not necessarily make it the city's culvert.
Yes.
Thank you.
Usually, we'll pull a plat to see what easements exist. A lot of times, those easements are put in by a developer, even as old as Point Setia, just to keep a recorded, something recorded so, you know, you don't build a detached garage on top of a storm drain type situation. There are also other easements that exist. Utility companies have easements, you know, for fiber, power, natural gas, but we still don't work on those easements either because it's not ours.
Thank you.
So, it's a private property issue?
Yeah, yeah.
When an individual buys these homes, is this something that's in their, something that they're aware of before they buy their home?
They should do their due diligence. We have issues before, you know, somebody buying a piece of property and not realizing there's a sewer main that goes down the middle of it. That's typically picked up by the surveyor when he does a survey for the plat. They should pick up those manholes and drainage structures and stuff like that.
Is there anything we can do as a city to help relieve some of his problem, or is all of his problem on his own private property?
Currently, with the way the policy reads, there's not much we can do, if anything.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Shea?
I have two questions, but I'm going to go ahead and finish up with this one since you're still there. Given that the average homeowner is not financially or from an engineering standpoint equipped to correct problems with city stormwater pipes on their property, nor do we really want them to, I don't think, it's pretty much, it's nobody's responsibility, and yet it's everybody's responsibility. So, I mean, do we want them, are they allowed to? Let's say they do have the financial means. Are they allowed to do whatever it takes to that portion that's on their property?
They're allowed to do whatever it takes as long as they don't divert that water onto somebody else. It can still maintain the same course, but you can't just plug it up and fix it that way. It still has to flow the way it was intended and designed initially. So, we've had, we've had property owners fix those issues before. But like you said, it's all about the financial means of that property owner. How capable are they of doing that? And, you know, it comes in like Administrator Graceley mentioned, as far as the easements, there's no established easements. We're currently putting a new easement downtown for old sewer main, and you got to go through, you got to record those easements, and it becomes a legal issue as far as like, where do we start and where do we stop? You know, and you get into Point Setia and Westwood and Powderhorn, there's a lot of drainage pipes, I think, underground that we just don't know about. They're not documented, they're not mapped. So, it just, Pandora's Box is open at that point, and I think that's where we decide, you know, how do we want to proceed? That's why I tell, and that's why I tell people, what's the policy? Policy's going to change, but change has a price tag as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is about Phase Two of the park development. The number one thing, I've gotten a lot of compliments, I've received emails and text messages from friends that have taken their kids to the park, and they absolutely love it across the board and even online. The comment is made over and over again that we need a fence around the playground. And I know that this was something that was brought up when we first looked at the plans for the park. I remember Councilmember Gooch, who's no longer on council, but he made that clear. A couple of us voiced our desire to have a fence, and I'm wondering, at this point, can we work one into Phase Two? Is there any chance of that happening?
It's not a matter of paying for a fence to be installed. It's a matter of what, you know, the playground has a lot of topography to it, and it, you know, the designers worried about the aesthetics of having a fence around that. Director Davis and I have talked about, this is not going to be a fenced-in playground where parents don't have to worry about their child getting away, but our thought was, on either side of the main entrance into the playground, doing, and we measured it out, it's about 60 feet on one side going this way and about 100 feet on the other side going that way. And that would at least, hopefully, drive the kids to the center, and they would only have to watch one point. Because if the kid runs out the backside, they're going into the park. So, I think the concern is, you don't want them to go out into the parking area and the street. There's a fair amount of distance between the playground and the road, and it was designed that way, you know, so that it's not right up on the road. Director Davis can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think even the old playground, there was never a fence there originally until this other part of Park Drive was being used, and then it had public right-of-way on three sides of it. And so, I don't know if it was a council decision or a staff decision at that point or combination of both to fence that playground because of the vehicular movements. This is just one means of egress that goes out to the public right-of-way, to the driving area. So, what we're trying to do is something that would at least condense the areas that they can leave the park on the Park Drive side. Does that make sense?
So, would that be...
It would not be a complete enclosure, though.
So, what you're talking about, would that be between the parking lot and the park, and then along that backside?
It would be along the sidewalk on the front of where the playground is, 60 feet this way, 100 feet this way.
So, before the sidewalk on this park?
Right on the edge of the sidewalk.
That would be something which would be better than nothing. I think safety always trumps aesthetics. It's a beautiful park, no doubt, but the public is asking for a fence, and I really think we need to give them something, and that would be a good visual barrier. But I will say, having raised six kids, they'll find the park that's not fenced and pop up on the other side of it when you're not looking. So, I would prefer a full fence with a user-friendly gate, not so that parents don't have to watch their children, but because kids are, they'll slip away. And if you're at the park with more than one child, it's really hard to keep an eye on everybody going everywhere. So, I'm just here to voice that. I know the public wants it. I know you know the public wants it. And, you know, I'd like to not put it on an agenda or force a council vote on it, but I have a feeling that all of council would support the fence. Anything that we can do to make it happen, I'm willing to help. That's all.
Councilmember O'Shea?
I have to concur with Councilmember O'Shea, and if it helps you feel any better, I took Matthews' place, but I agree with him. Good, bad, or otherwise, the city has created pretty much the Mac Daddy of cut-throughs. You know, you know where I live. If I'm coming up, I'm going to cut straight through these parking lots, dump out near the graveyard, and I'm going home, and that's a parking lot full of kids. So, I concur with Councilmember O'Shea. I do think we need to enclose the entire park, egress being facing the parking lot or not. If you close it, you close it. I didn't raise six kids, I raised twins, so eyeballs go different directions. You have to watch kids, and I think, I don't see any negative of putting up a fence around the entire park. And I too have heard a few things about it myself, just from online activity and some verbal communication, so I think, I think it would be wise to do it. Thanks.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Just to go back to the stormwater policy, and I'll try not to spend all night, but it's almost a catch-22, the policy we have in place. I don't know if it's a legal thing or it's just written policy that we've just adapted over the years to say we're not going to touch pipe outside of a right-of-way. However, once a city establishes a street and the storm drain that goes with it, all that water goes off. Now, it might have been 40, 50 years ago, but nonetheless, that water has to go somewhere, and it is part of the culvert system that's on the street. I would like, for us as council going forward, and perhaps you brought something up earlier that we could look into as far as our stormwater studies go, is to see what we can do to help address some of these issues in the neighborhoods where people have, like this gentleman had no idea that stormwater pipe was going through the yard. I've been over there and looked at it, and it's typical. The pipe's separated, water runs through it, and there's a hole in the ground. It wouldn't be a hard fix, but, and I also agree that, I don't know if I was a, well, I might know a little better, but I don't know if this gentleman knows if the size of pipe or what type of pipe he replaces is going to be suitable to take care of the water. Right now, it just pops out to some degree. So, it's a sticky issue, I agree. It's probably more financial than anything because some of these are not that difficult to fix, but I would encourage council as a group going forward, as we look into these stormwater issues, that we try to address some of these things and not just say, I'm sorry, it's not ours to fix, because it does connect to the city system. I would argue that if it was, well, I've got my own issues in my backyard, but if I had a similar issue, I could say, well, I'm just blocked that pipe up if it's mine, and then your stormwater system wouldn't work anymore. And you could argue about that. So, I think we need to look at this policy we have and address it in the future.
If I may, Councilmember Pinkerton, I think the biggest hurdle that we would need to overcome would be getting recorded easements from those property owners because we can't do work on private property. So, the first step would be getting a legal easement that would then be the city's easement. And so, you know, to me, that's the biggest concern.
Well, again, I guess...
It can be done. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying that needs to be the first step if council wants to pursue that.
There may not be a written easement, per se, that goes through the yard that addresses that particular storm pipe, nor, in that case, there may not be a sewer easement either. But nonetheless, the easement itself is the pipe, it's not the land, it's the actual pipe. It's part of the city's infrastructure. That's my point.
Councilmember Root?
Yeah, follow-up to Director West, real quick. How many times in a year does this typically happen? You're called to home, and you say, their policy, we don't touch it, it's in your property. How often is this coming up?
Pretty often. It's been here, you know, as long as I have, all year long, pretty much. I mean, it's not an uncommon issue, is what I'm saying.
Is it typically the majority happening in this, in Point Setia? Part of your calls?
Point Setia, Westwood, Powderhorn, Wagon Creek, Hunter's Woods, we've been, we've been all over, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel?
Thank you, Administrator Graceley. Each of our departments are represented this evening. Mostly, the department heads are here, I believe. Are there any questions for these other department heads? Councilmember Root?
All right, I don't mean to prolong the meeting. Looks like a long one anyway. Real quick for Robbie, if you could, real quick. And Director West, I forgot to tell you and your crew that y'all did a great job with the cleanup. I meant to echo that. I can tell when I leave city limits, if everyone else can, everything's clean until you get right outside the city, in the county, and you figure out how well our city works, so we appreciate that. Can you go, just real quick, real brief, how someone schedules the field with you?
Absolutely.
And the light situation? If they're functioning, why or why not they would be on or wouldn't be on?
Absolutely. First, I'll apologize if I get to coughing, but, Mayor Council, in response to Ms. Meems, she's a recreation coach in our program, has been for a few years. I've never spoken to her on this matter. I've spoken to Mr. Harris, had a great conversation with him, and February through, I'll give you a little history, February through probably the first part of June is recreation season, okay? End of July till about the first of November is recreation season. We are charged to take care of the kids that support our program in the city of Simpsonville that sign up to play in our program. What she is talking about is travel teams. We don't deal with travel teams. She is correct on first come, first served policy. There are so many travel teams in this area, I'm talking this whole upstate, that, and there's a need for it, I mean, competition, we know that, but we get unindated with requests on field usage, rentals, I mean, unindated. We probably can't afford the overtime we would be paying to do these things. That's why... That's why we come first-come-first-served policy. Hey, field's open, jump on it. Our teams take precedent over any travel teams that we have. So if the field's open, jump on it, okay? I just gave you, the timeframe I gave you is a long timeframe. Now, as I had a conversation, like I said, I had a good conversation with Mr. Harris. I spoke with the Balden, see what they do, because they're kind of our size. They rent fields, minimum hours, such and such, such and such. Greer just got done with them about their policy, got a pretty good little policy that they do, which I don't know if, me and Mr. Harris, we both couldn't talk today because we were both going to meetings. Come to find out, we're at the same meeting. I hope Brittany could check her phone. Chris Allage, I said, "Please call," Brittany got, might have an option. But she was headed here also, so Chris must have missed her. We've come up with an idea that is possible, that we can work with some. If those, the majority of the kids playing this program are in our rec program, not as a team, but spread through the program, we might can help you, because, okay, now we've got a good representation of kids, okay? So hadn't had a chance to share that with them, but that's kind of a little bit of the history of what's going on. We can't, we can't service every travel team out there. Again, and it's probably a monetary thing, too, if we really sat down and looked at it. My window, June, July, we're working on fields. We're spraying chemicals. We're doing things like that. We don't want to rent fields to kids, for safety reasons, okay? Then you look around, you got, I'm in November, December, January, I don't know about y'all, but I wouldn't want to be practicing tonight, you know, in some of these days like that. But again, that in a nutshell is what, how we look at this thing. You know, again, we're charged first to take care of our kids, and then we can do what we can do.
Yeah, okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Just as a clarification, Robbie, when you say, "If a field's open, jump on it," you do schedule fields for Simpsonville Recreation...
Yes, we do.
...Sponsor teams?
Yes.
So that if a field may look open, and then the scheduled team shows up, they have to tell those people, "Yeah, it looked open, but it was scheduled for me, you got to go."
And I can't tell you how many times that happens.
Right. So I just want to point out to be careful what you tell people that they can and cannot do. You can tell them...
Yes.
...if the field is available, but we do schedule fields for our teams.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Switch gears a little bit. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me those figures on the walking trail distances at Grisley Park.
Yes, sir.
That's been a question I've gotten several times.
I'm working on you a better map.
Yeah, that's good, that's really good. Question, I've noticed work being done on the existing parts of the salvageable parts of the pump track. Do we have enough there to do a limited track at this point, or...
We have a limited track as we speak. Give you some good news, and council as well. Purchase order was put in today for the other thirty-something parts. It will take four to five months for them to come, coming out of Missouri. We are putting the track back exactly like it was. It'll probably be about late summer when we get there.
Right.
But it is, but we have a half of a track now that they can start, A to B.
Thank you, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Thinking about the scheduling of fields, first-come-first-served, all that stuff, and first off, Ms. Menz, appreciate y'all's willingness to work with youth and on your own time and on your own dime a lot. My children didn't play softball, but I enjoy watching it. I didn't know how precise your calendar was for field usage, like if you could know a week in advance that X, Y, and Z fields are being used, but you know good and well at, you know, six o'clock to seven o'clock, this field's not, and then that could be the first-come... In other words, it's kind of like a Google Calendar. Everyone could say, "Hey, you know, first-come-first-served, no Simpsonville rec teams are going to be here at this point in time," and they could kind of jump in, claim the field, and not get too, what the mayor was alluding to, rightfully. So I didn't know how precise your calendar was from a week-to-week or monthly basis to where it could be a little smoother. And I understand the priorities, I agree with you on the priorities of putting Simpsonville rec first, but I did like the fact that you acknowledged, you know, there's probably a lot of Simpsonville kids on these travel ball teams.
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and so I didn't know how it could fit calendar-wise, instead of someone showing up at 5:45 all their team, and then there's someone that takes the field. So I didn't know if that could work, if that's a calendar that could be done between the parties, and that would just make things a lot easier. And of course, you know, they're not going to get the times they want all the time, but at least they kind of know what the availability is...
Right.
...and can jump on it when the opportunity arises.
That's something to look at. Field usage is, to back up, our recreation registration, we max out on the numbers that we can take per fields that we have, you know? You guys will give me another park with some fields, we can do some more. But, I'm in a little jab, but during those preseason starts, when we start and see, these two fields are going to help ease some of this, because right now, we're playing flag football on baseball fields. So, and that program has skyrocketed, but that's the only place we've got. We'll be able to handle more out here. We're going to have to worry about some parking issues, but we'll be, we'll fine with that. But that will ease it, too. But pretty much from, the time slots I gave you a while ago, from February 1st to June, you know, end of July, we start flag football evaluations February 3rd. We'll start evals in baseball in mid-February. Fields are, fields will be hot and heavy.
And if I remember correctly, we have issues around the concerts at the park, as in the...
Yes, sir. That is our issue with tournaments.
Okay.
You're a tournament director, you come to me and say, "Hey, I'd love to have June, I'd love to have the weekend of June 17, 18, put on a big tournament." Absolutely. Here's my deal. I can give it to you, I can book it to you for you today. They book a concert on the 17th, I got to tell you, after you've booked teams from thirty-six, forty teams, and I got to tell you, "Sorry, Mr. O'Rear, you can't have the tournament because of the concert."
Well, Administrator Grisley, I think we spoke about this in a meeting, and tell me if I'm wrong, the lag time for literally jumping in and scheduling a concert is about six weeks, is that right?
Thirty days.
Is it thirty days?
Yeah.
So four weeks.
Thirty days.
Sometimes we know four or five months in advance, but...
Oh, yeah, I was talking about the ones that might plug in into an open date. It takes about a month to do that, one way or the other, so...
But like today we're talking, there's one concert that's been booked. So if you wanted June 17, 18, I could give it to you, but around May 31st, they book, well, let's say thirty days out, they book, you don't want to take, the tournament directors don't want to take the chance of me having to come back to them and say, you know, "Hey, I'm sorry."
I guess it comes down to how quickly could they put a tournament together if you know the concert's not going to be there?
That's it. And these guys put tournaments out, and I'm sure they're probably signed up for tournaments already, I'm not sure.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, and thanks for your time last week. We got something cooking, we'll talk about it later.
Yes. Anybody else?
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for other department heads? Councilman O'Rear?
Nothing exciting. I just, I appreciate your reports, and Fire Department, everything, they're very concise, and I can understand them all. As it comes to the open positions, is there a concern point for you, like a number of officers that we need that becomes concerned for service areas, for, you know, getting everything done effectively? It always seems to be in the low single digits, but I just was curious if there was a number that gets you concerned at any certain point?
Yeah, I don't, we don't necessarily have a specific number. It really depends on the staff and overall, and where we've got resources allocated, but yeah, we're typical, I think right now, we're like at four or five, so we're okay. We're not sacrificing anything that's going to affect services that we're offering at this point, so.
That was it, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, no problem. Anything else?
Counsel?
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for department heads? All right, thank you for the city staff that is here, unless you have something that is coming up on the agenda, which I know we have something for Chief Nichols from the Fire Department, but unless you have something else on the agenda, you are welcome to make a hasty retreat to the exits. So thank you for being here this evening. Item 7, business. These are items that are anticipated to come before our next council business meeting, so anything that we take action on tonight would be something that would show up on the agenda for our next business meeting to be decided on at that point. I know that we are now one hour into our meeting. I do promise that we will take a recess after this next item. Item 7A, the Welcome Center budget. We had Allison McGarrett, the CEO of the Simpsonville Area Chamber of Commerce, on our agenda, and she wasn't able to be with us this evening, but she has her able replacement, Whitney Ferguson, who will come to the podium and summarize this item for us. Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, good evening. Whitney Ferguson, Director of Programming and Events at the Simpsonville Chamber. Just want to go over the proposed budget for the Welcome Center. You each have a packet in front of you. This budget is for a portion of the funds that we receive from the accommodations tax, as we have the Welcome Center at our building where the Simpsonville Chamber is located. And this breaks down how we use those funds. If you'll look on the second sheet, it'll break it down in yellow what the proposed budget is and how that breaks down. Eighty percent will go to general operations, such as staff time, supplies, utilities, rent, et cetera, and then twenty percent to tourism advertising. Allison does a fantastic job with the advertising that she does for the city through the original relocation guide, SC Living Summit Media, as we do for Shop Local as the season comes. And then we've also built a great relationship with the employees of all the Welcome Centers around the state, and then the welcome bags and postcards that we send to folks that have just moved here. So she does a really great job with that portion of it. You'll notice on the second sheet, under expenses, I was just going to point out how we break down those expenses. So twenty-five percent of our building is used for the Welcome Center, so we break it down as to twenty-five percent goes to facility and lease payments, twenty-five percent would go to utilities, et cetera, and that's how she breaks that down. And then one final thing that we included in the packet was the programming and events that we do for the community throughout the year, and that's the third sheet. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. A motion is in order. Councilmember Roche?
Mayor, I move that council approve the Welcome Center budget as presented.
One second. And from Councilmember Roche, and a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Councilmember O'Rear?
Just real quick, I tell you what, there's one person that emails me more than anybody, and that's her.
Yay.
So I know they are on top of what they do, they do a lot. I try to show up, I know the mayor shows up at probably about everything. I appreciate you including us in that, and I do not mind the emails at all, and I just know y'all have got a lot going on.
Have a lot going on in Simpsonville.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings?
Could you briefly describe what you do in the Welcome Center if a new prospect comes in, and do we have Simpsonville-related items for sale and so forth there?
We do. We are looking at revamping that piece of it, but if somebody comes in, we have an entire wall of information about the Simpsonville area. We have the historic walking tour guide that Allison puts together. We have a welcome bag that we've designed that has our magazine that we build, and then it's filled with items from our local business members. That goes to anybody that walks in. We have a lot of information that we're able to give them about this community, stuff from the city, the senior center, everything that's going on around the community. And I've been there five years now, and the people that are walking in is just growing and growing. It's incredible how many people come in to visit. And then we also get folks that call in that are interested in moving here, and we'll mail them packets in the mail.
I just want to express my appreciation for the Simpsonville Chamber and everything you do. I ran across a new business in town, actually patronized them, and it is very much a thing for me to go, "You need to join the chamber." And I actually got a card from Allison the other day and hand-carried it to that business owner, and hopefully they will come in and see you, because...
Thank you.
...the benefit that you provide to your members and to the community of Simpsonville is really good and very special, and so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If there are no more comments from counsel, I'll call for the vote. On the motion to approve the Welcome Center budget, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. At this time, I'm going to call for an eight-minute recess, unless somebody wants a different time, and we will be recessed for eight minutes. I call city council back to order. Item 7B, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Recommendations. Administrator Grisley, would you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I hope you don't get too weary of hearing me talk tonight, since I have a lot of items coming before you. As you are aware, every year, we put out information on applying for accommodations tax funding. This is the state accommodations tax funding that gets allocated back to the city. Thirty-five percent of it goes to fund the Welcome Center, which is what Whitney just presented to you. Well, let me back up. The first twenty-five thousand goes into the general fund budget, the next five percent goes to the general fund budget, thirty-five percent goes to fund the Welcome Center, and then sixty-five percent is dispersed to various organizations and events that apply for the funding. So we had a total of eleven applications this year, and the committee worked very hard. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee does a great job of coming together, they review the applications, they hear from each of the applicants, and then they absorb all of that information, and they come back a week later and talk as a committee and basically finalize their recommendations that then come before you. So these are recommendations. Council, of course, has the final say on how the money is allocated. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about these specific projects. I do want to point out one thing. We did have to, we have our own request that goes in, and that's for Freedom Fest, so that we can hire really well-known artists to perform and pay for the fireworks and all of those things. Typically, Saffy, the Simpsonville Arts Foundation, had been booking the bands and getting this funding, and Justin would book the food trucks, do the advertising and promotion, but Saffy would basically have the funding available. They would book the bands, and we would go from there and have the events. Very successful series over the years. In fact, it originated with Saffy way back before I got here. Unfortunately, the day before we had our first ATAX Advisory Committee meeting, I was contacted by a member of Saffy who said they didn't believe the music series was part of their mission anymore, and that left us in a bit of a lurch, because it's the day before we meet with the committee. These applications come in by the end of October, and the city had not put an application in for funding. So I did have to request that the committee add an item to their agenda to allow for the city to be the applicant for those funds for the music series. We're going to carry that forward. I think it's a great program, and certainly now that we have this beautiful amphitheater, we didn't want that to go away. And so I said to the Saffy member who called, "Well, so I take it you guys are going to finish out this season for funding that council allocated last year?" And they said, "No, we're not going to do it at all anymore." So I will tell you, I was really disappointed in that very short notice and the fact that they didn't honor their funding commitment that they made last year, to at least finish out the series this year. So I did want to point that out. I think these are all very worthy requests. I think these are all very worthy requests. A lot of them are repeats of requests that you've approved in the past, and they're great events, and they bring a lot of people into the community, and that's the premise of this money. You want to fund things that will bring people from outside of Simpsonville into Simpsonville to see what we have going on. And so, with that, I'll leave it.
Thank you. A motion is in order. Councilmember Hutchings.
Mayor, Council, I make a motion to approve the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee recommendations as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hutchings with a second from Councilmember O'Rear. Discussion? Councilmember Hutchings.
My understanding is we're having four concerts this year and four movies. Is that correct? Four?
It may end up being more movies because, as Mr. Campbell mentioned earlier, we are able to stretch those dollars further and have more events if it's just movie rights we're paying for. As you may recall, we had Parks and Rec purchase the giant blow-up movie screen so we don't have to rent that equipment. We already have it in-house. So, really, the only expense is for the movie rights, and so everything else is, you know, done by staff in-house. And so, it's possible we could have more than four. I mean, I like the idea of trying to do a series where, you know, you might focus on a theme like black and white or, you know, and then maybe do more current movies, maybe gear some toward, you know, teenagers so they have something to do. So, yeah, that's the plan. And the four concerts that we're doing before the end of the fiscal year, so the funding that you all approved last January, that cycle ends June 30th. This funding works on a fiscal year as well. So, because the great lawn is not ready yet, and they still have to finish upgrading and then hydroseed, we want to give the grass time to take root before we put a bunch of people on it. So, that's why we thought four is a good number. We can do all of that in June, or maybe we'll start, you know, mid-May and go to mid-June or something. We'll see how the grass is doing, but that's the plan. We didn't want to do an expanded series. And two, this was put on us, you know, unexpectedly and very suddenly, and so we have to get started on trying to book bands, too, which is not always easy to do.
So, of those four, do you have any of those booked at this point?
No, we don't.
If someone wants to reach out to you, they can do that?
They absolutely can, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Pinkerton.
I got to ask, historic walking tour in December and November of 2025, what is that? And it's upstate. Is that Simpsonville or is that upstate? What are we funding there?
So, the Chamber is doing that. That's something that they've done before, and it's a continuation of that. They actually print a map and brochures, and I think they do work with other surrounding areas to... Because the Simpsonville Area Chamber of Commerce extends beyond the city limits. So, and this funding, let me point that out, too, is not restricted to events inside the city. They just have to show the ability to bring people from outside the region into Simpsonville. But it doesn't have to be an event that's actually in the city. So, yes, they extend beyond our jurisdictional boundaries, but, you know, it is a guide that they would print and publish and have available at the Welcome Center.
But we don't know exactly what that is. I mean, November, December is probably not the ideal time to be walking around in Simpsonville or anywhere for that matter, but that's just me. There's not a lot of money, but I'm just curious what that... What are we funding?
I wish we still had Whitney here to give you a little bit more information on that.
Well, we have time to discuss it in another meeting, I'm sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Roche.
Along the same lines, I'm curious about the walking art tour guide. It looks like this is the first year that they've applied, and we're giving them $1,000. Do you know who is doing that and what kind of what that is about?
So, that is a Saffy initiative, and it is so that they can print a guide that shows people where public art is. We have a studio tenant on the advisory committee. She's an artist, and she was a little taken aback because when they first presented it, they were talking about murals and other sculptures and things like that. And she was like, "Well, what about, you know, the studio and the art center or other art galleries or pottery studios that are for profit?" And so, you know, it was mentioned that they needed to expand to those things as well. If it's truly an art walking tour, it needs to include all forms of art, you know, throughout the city and not just the murals and the sculptures.
So, is there an actual walk that you schedule or is this?
No, I think this is just to print the guide that would be picked up.
Okay. It feels like that could be something that's listed online on the city site.
I don't disagree with that assessment.
They put it on the city website.
Or on Saffy's website.
Right.
And we could link to it.
And then we could allocate that thousand to one of the other ones that didn't get something that they've asked for, and they've historically done this for years. That's my feeling on it.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings.
Back on the historic walking tour, that says update. Maybe, does that mean that maybe they're just updating the current tour that we have now as opposed to actually having a walking tour?
They've done it. I mean, they've had this guide for a long time now. So, yes, it's just to make it more current.
Timing of the tour, but more or less the updating of the guide.
Right.
Counsel? All right. So, along the lines of what Councilmember Roche was talking about, I have the same concerns about the walking art tour guide. I think that that's probably something that could be better done online. In fact, I think the likelihood of people stopping by to pick up a brochure is pretty low where they would probably prefer to look at it on their phone. In addition to this, before I go into a couple of the other items here, I just want to say that the music series was founded by Saffy. They're the ones who started it, and in fact, the original stage that was here before we did the park renovation was built to support that music series, and it surprises me that they would say that they no longer feel like this is their mission or maybe they want to concentrate on visual arts. I don't know, but somehow Oktoberfest is part of their mission. So, I'm a little bit confused about that. And then likewise, the other things that they... The other thing the Simpsonville Arts Foundation requests for the Spring Into Art, which is a brand-new item, that I guess I'm concerned about... They really left us high and dry for our music series this year. Just dumped it on the city as a total surprise to us. Their current commitment requested money for the coming year, and then at the last second said, "No, we're going to withdraw our request, and by the way, we're dropping out of the current commitment that we have." I call into question... It's got to be blunt. I call into question the reliability of this group, and I'm thinking that maybe that something that I think is much more important, it draws way more people to this area, is the Everything Outdoor Fest. Saffy kind of got, you know, every bit of money they requested, and Everything Outdoor Fest didn't even get half of the funds they requested. So, counsel, you know, based on those thought processes, I've been to Everything Outdoor Fest and met the promoters. It is a fantastic event that draws tens of thousands of people. So, based on these thoughts, members of council, I move to amend the recommendation from the Accommodations Tax Committee as follows. Reduce the allocation for item two, Walking Art Tour Guide, from $1,000 to $0. Reduce the allocation for item four, Oktoberfest, from $8,000 to $4,000. Reduce the allocation for item nine, Spring Into Art, from $5,000 to $2,500 for a total reduction of $7,500. And to move this amount to item six, Everything Outdoor Fest, increasing this allocation by $7,500 and bringing the total allocation to $15,000. Do I hear a second? I have a motion from the mayor with a second from Councilmember Rup. Discussion on this subsidiary motion.
Could you repeat your breakdown? It was number two.
Number two, reduce that to zero, $1,000 down to zero. Number four, from $8,000 to $4,000. Number nine, from $5,000 to $2,500. That's a total of $7,500. Okay? Discussion? Councilmember Hutchings.
Where are we moving it to?
To item number six, the Everything Outdoor Fest. We'll take them from $7,500 to $15,000, which would be three-quarters of their request.
Got you. Okay.
Councilmember O'Rear.
I don't disagree with any of this, but it is... Do we have to go through any other channel besides this, like having them resubmit? Asking... Okay, thank you.
Final approval falls to council. This is a recommendation from this committee.
All right, thanks.
But this does go to the business meeting for final approval.
Yes.
So, there is time to revise it again if needed. Counsel? Councilmember Roche.
I will say that Oktoberfest does bring quite a crowd to the city, and we do benefit greatly from that. I see in past years we've given them five. This year, they asked for eight. I would suggest that we give them the five we've always given them instead of dropping them to four because that is a legit... It's not art necessarily. It does have some elements of art, definitely music. It is a pretty big festival, though, and it does bring people.
Talking about Oktoberfest?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I would think five, like we've always done, would be more appropriate than dropping them to four. I don't want to feel... I don't want Saffy to feel like we don't want to partner with them in every, you know, in the things that they've done in the past that have been successful. I don't want to... I don't want Saffy to feel like we're just cutting them out completely. With the Oktoberfest one, I would suggest five instead of four. Would you consider amending your motion?
I would consider that if other members of council think that's appropriate. Councilmember Rup.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that on line item nine, they received, looks like $1,000 funding last year. They're asking for five this year, so you could reduce what they got last year and keep more into Oktoberfest if you wanted to take still from one line to the other.
So, instead of reducing it down to $2,500, reduce it to $1,000 and?
And then you could put more back into the Oktoberfest.
Put more back into Oktoberfest?
Yes, sir. Just a suggestion, my apologies.
What do you think? Councilmember Roche?
That sounds good. That sounds good. So, we're talking about number nine, Spring Into Art, instead of $5,000. What is Mr. Rup suggesting?
$1,000?
$2,000.
Okay.
And then take that $1,500 and put it in... Back into Oktoberfest, which would make that one $5,500?
Yes, sir.
Sure I've got the right numbers here. That would make... That makes seven... Are my numbers right here that that would make it $8,500 reduction? It's $1,000 to zero, there's $1,000. $8,000 to $5,500 is... Not $2,500. That's where my math went wrong. I've had $3,500. Okay, that would still equal $7,500. Okay, so $1,000 from the tour guide, $2,500 reduction for Oktoberfest, resulting in a total of $5,500, and $5,000 down to $1,000 for Spring Into Art, which would make a total All right. So, members of council, I will amend my motion to amend this recommendation as follows. Reduce the allocation for item two, Walking Art Tour Guide, from $1,000 to $0. Reduce the allocation for item four, Oktoberfest, from $8,000 to $5,500. Reduce the allocation for item nine, Spring Into Art, from $5,000 to $1,000 for a total reduction of $7,500. And move this amount to item six, Everything Outdoor Fest, increasing this allocation by $7,500 and bringing the total allocation to $15,000.
Second.
Okay, I have a second on that one. So, a motion from the mayor to amend his motion and a second from Councilmember Rup. Discussion? Councilmember Hutchings.
Vote on the original motion?
Pardon me?
Do we need to vote on the original motion?
No, I... This amends that motion. We need to vote on the amendment, and then that will have the subsidiary motion amended. So, voting on the amendment to the subsidiary motion, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. Amendment carries by a vote of seven to zero. So, the new motion in front of us is to reduce the allocation for item two from $1,000 to $0, for item four from $8,000 to $5,500, item nine from $5,000 to $1,000 for a total reduction of $7,500, and move that $7,500 into item six, Everything Outdoor Fest, for a total of $15,000 for that item. On the motion to amend the recommendation from the Accommodations Tax Committee, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. So, now the main motion is to approve the Accommodations Tax Committee recommendation as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero, and this item is moved to the agenda of the next business meeting. Item seven C, the request for proposal for FEMA assistance. Administrator Graceley, would you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. You have before you a chart that lists out all of the responses that we received to our request for proposals. Let me give you a little background on that. When the disaster first occurred, many entities, in fact, most because of their lack of experience in dealing with FEMA on these things, will use an emergency contract to contract with a specific firm that has experience doing these things. We did that emergency contract, which by the way is completely reimbursed by FEMA, there's no cost to the city for it, with a company called ICF, and we have been working with them over the past 90 days. That contract ends after 90 days, and so I put an RFP advertisement out back in November, I think. Responses came back in in December, and then Chief Nichols, Director West, and I went through all of these submittals and narrowed it down to three firms that we wanted to interview. We did those interviews the following week, I think, and while the other two firms are very capable and we have the utmost confidence that they could deliver the assistance that we need, we thought, you know, all other things being equal, it was important to continue to work with the firm that we've been working with over the past 90 days. We've seen their performance. We're very happy with the services they've provided to us, and so our recommendation to council is that we contract with ICF to continue helping with the FEMA public assistance reimbursement. This will come in the form of a grant from FEMA, but it's not a grant that you have to... We already have a portal. We're putting all of our information in there, invoices, forced labor numbers, and all of those things. So, we've already been doing that for quite some time. This, too, will be reimbursed up to 5% of our total... This, too, will be reimbursed up to 5% of our total reimbursement. None of these firms have ever exceeded that 5%. In fact, they all told us during the interview that their goal is to keep the number low enough so that we can also be reimbursed for some of our administrative time.
Oh. My goodness. Wow. Okay. Sorry.
No, you need to share.
So that we can then be reimbursed for our administrative hours. Director Farino and myself and, you know, other staff members who have done the administrative work of putting that information into the portal, of getting bids on items that need to be corrected, Director Davis getting the replacement parts for the pump track, all of those things, so that they would be made whole by FEMA, and we, too, on the administrative side, would be made whole by FEMA. And again, no expense to the city at all to enter into this contract.
Motion is in order. Councilmember Rocher?
May I remove that council approve the RFP FEMA Assistance contract as recommended by staff with ICF?
Have a motion from Councilmember Rocher with a second from Councilmember Root. Discussion? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, I appreciate the looking into this. If we're accepting a proposal from this contractor, is this to accommodate work we've done, or is this put them like on retainer for future work?
This is to continue to assist us with our FEMA application for reimbursement, because we're not done yet. There's still a lot of projects, like, for instance, the stormwater issues that are just now in design. So obviously, we haven't incurred... We've incurred some design costs, but we're also going to incur construction cost and those things. And so they would help us with our initial reimbursement. They would also help us with the 404 application to look at South Almond and Bonwood as well. And it would all be covered under that 5% cap of the total amount that we are asking FEMA for.
Go through this in two years, these are off the book then, and we start over again? Or are we just...
We've never had a firm do this for us. Past disasters that have happened have been on a much smaller scale, and typically, the county would take the lead. And they would get invoices from all the cities, and then they would apply for the money. And then we would be reimbursed what's due to us. Because this was such a wide-scale disaster, it's every man for himself, basically. So it's the first time I've ever been involved in this. I can tell you, I've been involved in a couple of other natural disasters, but, like I said, they've been small enough for the county to take the lead, and then they've just given us our money back.
So when we looked at these three, or actually more, did they actually give you a cost per unit, and were they the cheapest?
They gave us rate structures, and all of their hourly rates were generally the same, with the exception of one, the Forvis Mazars, their rates were substantially higher, by about $50 an hour, which, you know, in the cumulative adds up to a lot. But the rest of them were pretty much in line with, you know, what rate structure already is for ICF and what it would continue to be working with them. So it didn't come down to cost as much as it came down to proximity to us, the years of experience that they have, and those types of things that made them attractive for us to interview and, you know, look at as far as the final contract being awarded.
Well, I appreciate that. I guess as an approval of cost, I mean, there's nothing for me to look at to say one's cheaper than the other. But if this is essentially you're getting reimbursed by FEMA, then maybe it's not as big an issue. But it would have been interesting to know what their rate structure was, so we actually see what...
I'll be happy to share those proposals with you between now and the business meeting, and you can look through them. I think that would be helpful. If we had electronic copies, I would have emailed those out to everybody on council, but they only... Only one firm that responded to the RFP gave us a thumb drive. Everything else was a printed copy, and we only asked for one. And the reason being there is that, you know, I knew that we would get a lot of responses, and it's always been my practice, I hate the overhead that these firms incur to send us multiple copies of those proposals, particularly for something that we're being reimbursed for anyway. Now, you know, in the times we've done procurement for design services, or when we did the construction manager at risk for this project, obviously, we needed multiple copies, and the committee needed to be able to look at everything and go over everything. So we do take more time to review all of those aspects of the proposal. In this case, I thought that the ones that we've outlined, the location of key staff, experience of key staff, and the interviews that were conducted were the main determining factors for us. And I did ask Director West and Chief Nichols to stay, because they served on the committee as well. And so if you would like to ask them questions or get input from them on the process, I'm sure they'd be happy to share that.
I appreciate the work we went into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Just real quick, what, for my records, what's ICF stand for?
Well, I have the proposal in my office. I can't remember.
That's fine. I'd like you to write it down for my records. Thanks.
I'll be happy to get that information for you. I'll text or email that to you.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Hutchings?
How can we be assured that the damages assessed will be covered by the funds granted by FEMA? In other words, is there a limit? Or is it...
So...
We determine we've got damage... Or who determines the amount of the damages? ICF would do that?
So we've already had multiple meetings with FEMA staff, too. They have FEMA staff on the ground, and then the State Emergency Management Division has been here as well. We've got another meeting scheduled for tomorrow. So we've had multiple meetings with them, and really, it's up to FEMA. ICF, or whichever firm you approve, would merely be helping us with the red tape and the process. They don't determine what those costs are. FEMA representatives would determine what those costs are. They've been wonderful to work with. I mean, they haven't tried to... In fact, they've tried to make sure we're getting our maximum reimbursement. They're helping us cover all the bases. But even with a good FEMA and state EMD team, we need guidance from firms that have experience, because we would all be lost. I think I could see some head shakes out there in the crowd. I think Chief Nichols and Director West would concur that, you know, it is a very, very complicated process.
So I guess that's what I'm asking, is what determines a maximum reimbursement?
So all of the receipts that we pulled together, we've got forced labor from, you know, the immediate aftermath of the storm, when the fire department had boots on the ground, cutting and tossing to clear roadways. Public Works was doing the same. The Public Works staff that continued to work on debris removal, that would be reimbursed as well. Equipment that we used to do that. The fees to take the debris to either the landfill or other mulch yards that were accepting debris. In addition, whatever our insurance doesn't cover, all of the losses that we had from roof damage and the pump track and those types of things would be reimbursable. We had a retaining wall and a fence at the amphitheater that incurred some damage. So all of those things would be factored in, and there's not a maximum number. It is, as long as we can show that those damages occurred and we have the proper documentation, we would be reimbursed for all of that.
Right.
You're welcome.
Counsel? On the motion to approve the RFP FEMA Assistance Contractor as recommended by the city administrator, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Item 7D, the Request for Proposal for a Tenant for the former Fire Department Administration Building. Administrator Grisley, would you summarize, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council. As you all know, we developed an RFP to put out for any potential business or interested party to lease the former Fire Department Admin Building, which you can see now. The other two buildings have been demolished. This, of course, is on the corner of Academy and East Curtis. To me, a very focal point of the park. And you have been provided the proposals of the respondents to that RFP, and so this would be to decide on which proposal you would want to accept and extend an offer of a lease contract to whichever respondent you feel most comfortable with. I will tell you that the city is not responsible for any outfit on the building. That would be done by the tenant. So there's no real financial risk to the city. I believe we have, you know, some excellent respondents. I don't want to muddy the waters by saying, you know, I don't want to choose favorites. It's not my decision. It's your decision. But I am happy to answer any questions you might have. Since I did meet with them, Chief Nichols did as well. He provided access to the building so that they could see, you know, the condition and the floor plan, and, you know, be certain that they wanted to submit a proposal.
Motion is in order. This one is a difficult one to formulate, because we have two to pick between. I think what we'll do is, we will discuss the two candidates first, but we do need to stay germane to that discussion. And then a council member, if they're motivated, can make a motion to recommend one or the other. So discussion? Well, if nobody's going to go first, I personally, my preference is Crown &amp; Bloom. I like their proposal. It's very professional. I think that they have put together a very good proposal. I do want to point out that this request for proposals was out there for a long time, and we only got two applicants. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel like we need to choose one or the other of them, because I don't really want to go back out to the market and see if there's anybody else who's interested. They just haven't expressed their interest, and especially since I think we have a good proposal in front of us. So my preference is Crown &amp; Bloom. Councilmember Rocher?
I would echo the same spectacular job whoever did their marketing, just absolutely beautiful. They presented the entire business plan. They did their homework. It includes demographics about Simpsonville, who lives here, how much they participate in local businesses, the local market in general, population in the Simpsonville trade area. The community analysis was impressive to me. It shows me that they care about Simpsonville, and they're in touch with our consumers. Really appreciated the fact that they did a business plan and shared it with us, projecting their... Everything from three months... Let me look. From six months to three years, I believe it was, for their goals. That makes me feel good, because what I don't want to see happen is that this becomes an experimental place, and someone comes in and tries something new, and it doesn't work out. And then we have to do this again a year from now to, you know, instead of renewing a lease. I think that Crown &amp; Bloom's goals, planned out for three years, along with their proven track record, because they already have this business in place in a mobile form, giving them a brick-and-mortar location to work out of, and knowing that they're dedicated enough to have a three-year plan, makes me feel very good that they'll be there for a good long time. I think it's a really good fit for being close to the park and the music feature that we're going to have here. So that's my choice, I think, Crown &amp; Bloom.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, actually, I asked Administrator Grisley if I could reach out to the folks that proposed, and we did talk. One of my concerns, and I also agree, Crown &amp; Bloom, one of my concerns or questions was, it's labeled a coffee shop, but we have a park full of kids, and I was concerned that perhaps in the summer, especially when we have a lot of people wanting, other than coffee, would that be available? And they said that they would definitely look into that and provide other beverages, per se, as opposed to maybe what's on their menu today, because we do have a lot of folks that are already here in the wintertime. But the summer is going to be phenomenal. So I also agree that this would be the best choice.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yeah, I appreciated both sets of folks putting this together and putting all the time into it. And to me, it's the Simpsonville Library, because that's what it was when I was a little kid. I do also, I kind of caught something Councilmember Rocher said. Biggest thing I was looking at is, what has the best chance of prospering at that location long-term? And I do think the Crown &amp; Bloom does have a better chance of prospering long-term at that location. I think it'd be a great use of that. And as a matter of fact, I live within walking distance, so maybe someone can give me a tutorial on coffee one day, because I still don't understand it. But yeah, I appreciated all the efforts put in, but I do think that would be the best option.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Sounds like Crown &amp; Bloom is carrying the day. Question... Can we ask questions of the applicant?
Sure.
Under the expanded offerings, you're saying that you... Your menu could include baked goods and other business products, as well as in-store events and workshops. Could you expand on that a little bit?
On, like, the baked goods and things like that?
Yeah. What your expanded offerings would be?
Yes. So we're actually partnering with a local baker. She is in a commercial kitchen, de-hect kitchen, all that good stuff. And we're partnering with her, and she's going to be providing Quick Bikes, things kind of like how Starbucks offers grab-and-go options and things. We're going to be offering things like that, some cupcakes, pastries for the morning time, like breakfast sandwiches, stuff like that, stuff that's very easy to kind of grab, get in and get out, without having to worry about fire suppression systems and things like that, where we can have the options available to patrons, but not have to have a committed kitchen and things like that.
On workshops, the other applicant had an element of art associated with it. Is that something you're talking about, or what are you referring to there?
Workshops. Workshops?
Yeah, like helping people, like, learn how to make coffee?
Oh, okay. Yeah. I was making sure that was what we were talking about. Yes. So workshops on helping people become educated about coffee, learning how to make it and things like that. Yeah. Latte art, fun classes and stuff, just to kind of bring the community in. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Okay. Now, Councilmember Root?
Just a quick question for the Administrator Grisley. There's only going to be parallel parking there, correct, on Academy, as far as there...
No, there will be diagonal parking available. When the roadwork is complete, it will end up being just moved in the other direction. You know, now the diagonal parking goes so that the traffic flows out to East Curtis. So all that will be redone, and then that same diagonal parking will just be oriented the other way.
Okay. And there will be no future plans of this becoming any kind of drive-through rehab?
No, there's no way to do a drive-through on that site. So it would be... I would imagine, and I'm sure that was part of their consideration, putting this together, that a lot of their customer base will come from people who are using the park, you know, when we do have events in the park. And then there will be people who will park and want to go access that, too, because they are doing organic and gluten-free options, and that's become very popular now. And so I think they'll have a large customer base because of, you know, their offerings in those areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Who is your operations expert? Can you come to the microphone and answer a quick question for me, please? One of the concerns I have about this space, and it is a limiting space, for example, if you want to put in a significant restaurant, and it really revolves around this, the back-of-house operations. You know, the back door, taking the garbage out kind of thing. It's really not very well set up for that, and I'd just like to hear what your thoughts are on that, of dealing with back-of-house. There's no place for a delivery truck to pull around back. It's going to have to come through the front door. So what are your thoughts?
Yeah. So we actually looked into a lot of that. There's a significant space in the basement for storage for, like, coolers.
There's no place for a delivery truck to pull around back. It's going to have to come through the front door. So what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so we actually looked into a lot of that. There's a significant space in the basement for storage for like coolers, things like that. So we'll be able to maximize the seating area upstairs by putting all of our storage and things like that that can be stored without a temperature-controlled environment. And then also things like, you know, we've already gotten design or drawn out like how the bar flow would actually happen to maximize the space for the patrons that come in as well. So there are things to consider and there'll be things to kind of figure out along the way. You know, there's a good movie out there about the McDonald's brothers, how they taped up the floor with the blue tape and things like that. So there will be a lot of figuring out. But I think it's going to work, you know, we're super excited about the opportunity, so we're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from counsel? I think a motion is in order. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Rocha.
Mayor, I move that council approve the RFP tenant Crown &amp; Bloom Coffee Company to occupy the former Fire Department Administrative Building. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rocha with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Is there any further discussion? So on that motion, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, all opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Item 7E, East Curtis Street crosswalk, I think is the more clear word, crossing. Councilmember Pinkerton, would you summarize for us, please?
Sure, with the opening of the new offices, Fire Department, the courthouse and everything in the park especially, there's really no good way to cross Curtis Street as it is. I've done it many times since it's opened and before. It's a Frogger operation. I know there's some concerns about the fact that when we have a state road that we're dealing with, there's not really any good handicap access or sidewalks for that matter in some cases. However, I don't think that precludes the opportunity for us to be able to provide safe crossing across Curtis Street. Preferably, I would say that it would go at Park Drive. But it really is inconsequential as long as we get some sort of crossing. I know in the permanent configuration, if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be at Academy. But that's a ways out. So in the meantime, I think we really need to look at putting the crosswalk somehow across the street so that we can provide safe access to many residents that live and/or access to park and the buildings. Therefore, I move to direct the city administration and staff to engage with SCOTD and/or our current design team as needed to explore immediate need for pedestrian crosswalk on East Curtis to facilitate safe pedestrian movements.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Pinkerton with a second from Councilmember Rocha. Discussion? Councilmember Rocha.
How far off are we from having the crosswalk at Academy Street? How far along?
It's really hard to say because we haven't bid the downtown project yet. And I'm not sure who the contractor is going to be. I don't know which element of, you know, that is a large project. And I can't say that they would start on East Curtis Street. You know, they may start on South Main Street, or Southeast or Northeast Main. So it's a hard question to answer. I do think this is a good idea. And having a resolution of council, and this would be in the form of a resolution, which I'll prepare between now and the business meeting, gives me more to take to DOT. It's got some teeth in it. So I can say, you know, council hears from residents and council believes this is really important to do. And so we need to figure out a way to provide for a safe crossing.
Okay, I know that crossing from that side for members going to Simpsonville First Baptist on Sunday morning has been an issue that I've brought up a few years back because Sunday it's really busy through there. And I think this will actually help them as well, even if it's temporary. I don't want to sink a ton of money into it if we're going to tear it up later, but...
It wouldn't cost a lot of money. I don't think that we would. I mean, I think it's something Public Works could probably do. Or if DOT chose to do it, since it's their road, you know, perhaps we could find some type of reimbursement if they sent their maintenance crew to do it. The difficult hurdle is going to be getting them to agree to do it. They don't like mid-block crossings. They don't like particularly on a road that has that kind of traffic. But I do think Councilmember Pinkerton is right. It's at the point where something needs to be done because of the number of people, and we've tried to cross it before. Director Farino and I stood across from it one day, and it is like playing Frogger to get across the street. It doesn't feel good at all. It's frightening. So, you know, something that would hopefully slow traffic and, you know, a raised crossing to make it a little more evident with a pedestrian crossing sign right in the center, like you see in downtown Greenville. It's still not going to be quite as visible as that because of the speed of the traffic going through there. But, you know, we'll try to make it as obvious as possible.
Anything in the way of a flashing light, something that's going to get attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? I just want to say how much I support this thought process. And as a matter of fact, I would recommend that in your discussions with SCOTD, you do not approach them with the thought process that this additional crosswalk would be temporary. I think that an additional crosswalk is still going to be needed, maybe even more so, after we get through with the redirection of traffic. And it will be great to have crosswalks up at the light that's going in at Academy and Curtis. But the idea of people coming out of Point Setta, having to walk all the way up to Academy and then across the street and then traverse back to the park, I think is not a reasonable expectation. I know that SCOTD is not susceptible to being pushed around. I don't even think our General Assembly has much success doing that. But armed with the resolution from council and how much we do hear about this from constituents and how much I know multiple of us have experienced trying to cross that street, me included, I think this is very, very important, so I support this as well. Anything further from counsel? On the motion to do a resolution to direct the city administrator to engage South Carolina DOT to install a crosswalk in the vicinity of Park Drive, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, all opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries seven to zero. All right, another hour has passed. Do we want to push through our next agenda item before we go to? Okay, so I'm hearing that we are going to continue and we will have a chance to take a restroom break before we go into executive session. Item 7S-F, council access to communications. Councilmember O'Rear, would you summarize, please?
Yes, I'll preface this by saying that this is unfortunate that it's come to this, to be quite honest with you. Because on June 11th of this past year, 2024, speaking on the second reading of the budget, I asked to have access to communicate with the city of Simpsonville citizens via the website, same as the access that the mayor has enjoyed over the years. And it was a non-answer. I didn't ask for an answer. I just put that out there. That was June 11th. Didn't know I needed to ask permission, didn't know that that was going to be an issue. But when the website went live, I noticed a couple of things right off. Is one, council had no, no, I'm trying to pull the word out. They were not represented on the city council page. It was solely the mayor. Mr. Campbell fixed that quickly. But also, the one thing I did ask for in two different meetings, the first one being June 11th, was also be able to, via a Word one, whether it be a link, a page, I'm not sure, all the computer lingo. And also be able to communicate. And it's based on really the fact that we are a council, form of government. And I recognize here in my proposal that the mayor's granted very limited rights that are also, that are not also given to six other council members. I recognize that and I understand that. I respect that. But also historically, with legal documents like our own constitution, if an ordinance doesn't either expressly give or take in a situation, then that right is automatically granted, and I'm not trying to play attorney here. But because we are not excluded from that specifically by our ordinances, the mayor is not given that specifically by our ordinances. I didn't think it was a very big ask, to be honest with you, to be able to maybe send just in a two-paragraph PDF or Word document just to copy paste onto my site, something that could be to do with anything city-wise, not Chad-wise, city-wise. Didn't really think that was a big ask. I wasn't, certainly not trying to take anything away from the mayor. He has, you know, he has what is afforded to him via our ordinances. That is not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to add, I'm trying to add the ability to communicate with our constituents in any form I can. And that should not be taken solely at the subjective discretion of the city administration. When I approached via email, then in person, to ask for this, what happened was completely unexpected. Because like I said, you had from June 11th until present to tell me that you weren't going to do it. You didn't take that opportunity. You waited until the website was launched and then told me almost verbatim that you're not going to do the work and that I would have to literally do what I'm doing right now, have an ordinance drawn up to grant to me what I believe our ordinances automatically do by the fact that they don't grant them to anyone else and they don't take them away from me. With the sole explanation of this denial as it would be too much work. And that's the only explanation I've ever been given. It's too much work. Well, you know, we're kind of at the edge of a cliff here because I do, you know, I got three years left in this term. And there are things I would like to do. And obviously, as an elected official, you have people that work with you. I never say anyone works for me. I think that's disrespectful. We all work together. But there are certain responsibilities that are given to elected officials, to administration, to police, to fire, and we all have our jobs. To be denied access to a website that I voted to help fund and the taxpayers are paying for, the same people that vote for all of us up here, with the explanation of that would be too much work for our community relations director, what's the next too much work? I mean, I have something, and I will say, our community relations director has jumped in with me on the next thing I spoke to Mr. Davis about earlier. And like I prefaced all this, I shouldn't have to be doing this. But this is nothing new for me. For a year that I've been here, I have enjoyed support of the administration on any proposal of mine, never. Never. So it's no surprise. But it's sad. It's sad that I have to ask to be able to communicate with the taxpayers of Simpsonville who are paying for that website and will be paying for that website. I don't think it's much of an ask. I think it's a dangerous precedent to set to allow the administration to tell a council member that they're not going to do something because they deem it too much work. So that being said, mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to pass council access to communications that all non-mayoral council members are to have equal access to that of the mayor at all avenues of communication with the citizens of Simpsonville, to include but not limited to the city website, print media, electronic media. This ability shall not be limited by decision of anybody other than the elected members of council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear with a second from Councilmember Rocha. Discussion? Councilmember Williams.
I'd like, on this subject, I'd like to say, so if the purpose of having a blog or site for council members is to just update the city on things going on in Simpsonville, then I feel like we would have seven statements being made of the same thing. The way this ordinance is written, I feel like it kind of leaves it open to council members or mayor, all the council members, having the ability to just talk to the citizens of Simpsonville about anything. And I don't think it looks very professional on a city website to have council members talking about personal opinions on different things or just anything of that matter that may not have to do directly with what's upcoming in Simpsonville, the development that's coming in, what we have to offer. And I feel like the message that was put on there says that already. So I would suggest to change the message to a message from mayor and council so there includes everybody in the one statement. Also adding the possibility of each council member's social media page link to our profile where it has all of our information, where you can contact us. And it would have a link where it could take you to your council Facebook page or anything else. And then you have that ability to express or address Simpsonville on anything else other than what's put in the forwarding message.
Counsel? Councilmember Rocha.
Before the current mayor's page came up, there was no page. The mayor before did not have their own dedicated page on our city website. I do agree with Mr. O'Rear that it's not a big ask. And I don't think it should have come to this desk as an ordinance change proposal. Far as I know, we never voted to allow the mayor to have a dedicated page to communicate his thoughts and concerns on the website. Had that come to council, I think several of us would have said, yeah, we'd like the same thing. So staff was able to do it for the mayor. But then when others came and said, hey, we can't do that without a vote. You have to put it on the agenda, drag it out in public, and we're going to have to vote on it. It's not a good look. It's just not a good look. Now, concerning what was just said about repetition in the message, I can't really see a page from mayor and council and hear some information that we're all going to agree on. I don't see how that's going to benefit anybody. We are elected officials. We do represent the city as a whole. And all of us have different thoughts and concerns and things that we might like to communicate. I can see how that would be, that could be problematic, given the fact that elected officials do enter into some contentious conversation with the public and with each other and things like that. And so there does need to be a check. I don't think the city website should have to be a place for all of us to air whatever we want to say and then it falls back on the city as, hey, look what's on your website. I think that the best way to handle this is for all of council, the mayor and all succeeds, to have a link under what's already provided on the website, which is each of our names, our addresses, our Word numbers, our phone numbers, basic communication, you know, information. Maybe a link under each of those that takes them to an outside website. So if you want to see what Mr. O'Rear has to say, you click on that and he's responsible for everything on his outside webpage. The mayor's responsible for everything he says on his outside webpage and so on. And I think that that protects the city. And it keeps all of us in communication at a fair and balanced way. That's my suggestion. So I probably won't be able to vote for this as it's worded, but I would be open to something that allows everyone access that allows everyone access while protecting the city.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Well, naturally, I had to do a lot of research on this and this is what I do at four in the morning. But there's nothing in our ordinances right now that have anything to do with website. You just type in website, there's nothing there. I actually went to the state's website and perhaps our council could help us out with this, but I typed in website. And I think there was like 17,000 links within there, but none of them, and I didn't read all 17,000, but they all pertained to what you can actually say on a website per state rules, but not governance on websites for municipalities. I don't know when this website got established. You know, they all, they popped up everywhere. I think probably every municipality has one. But what we don't have, and I see, and I can understand the concerns, what I don't see we have is any guidelines on how our website is monitored and structured and established. It's been ordained to this gentleman over here to monitor and take care of the website. But my suggestion would be that the website needs some structure, rules and regulations on what could go in it, who monitors it, so forth. I don't know that it's up to council to make all those decisions. I'm thinking a committee of sorts. It might be a part of the council, part of cities, different staffs to get together and propose it. There are structural ways to build websites. I don't remember the acronym right off the top of my head, but there is a way to facilitate websites where they're, they're meant to be, and especially for our city. I see our website as an information hub for city information and a place for where we can, or citizens can go and apply online for various forms of budget, know when the trash is going to get picked up, that sort of thing. I don't think it should be a blog for anybody, frankly. I think that's outside. I don't even want a link personally. You have my telephone number, my address. You're welcome to call me at any time. Again, I would agree. I can't vote yes on the way this is written. I think it's too ambiguous. I think it raises a lot of questions and concerns, which I put out there. And I would be more than happy to be open to some form of dialogue where we could structure our website where it fits the city's needs and for future monitors and councilmen that they'll have something. To give an example real quick, Poynsetia had rules and regulations, our neighborhood. But they were, they were made in 1970. They have nothing to do with what our neighborhood does now. So as president of the board, I said, I'm not going any further unless we restructure our rules and regulations. And we did. We made it sensible for what was going on now and what can happen in the future. So that's my suggestion that going forward. I don't know how we get through this tonight. Again, I can't vote for the way it read, but I'm more than happy to look into something that makes sense for our city as far as our website goes.
Councilmember Williams?
The, reading the message that we're referring to, I think is a very nice message put on the front of the website. So if people from out of town are coming in and they are interested in Simpsonville and they just want to know what kind of amenities we offer, and it's just like a two paragraph statement about the different amenities that Simpsonville has, different things we have to offer to the community and things like that, I think that's a good message to have on the page, but maybe without any member of council being involved in it at all and just be like a message from the city. That way, people are just coming in and looking and getting, you know, the highlights of the town or projects that are, you know, like the new park and things that are going to be coming up or that are, that are ways to draw people in and then just not have any personal blogs or sites or anything on the actual Simpsonville website at all and just leave it very generic.
Councilmember Rup?
I actually don't have a dog in the hunt, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to throw out. I would be for rewording this because I do think that our bio should perhaps have a backlink. I think it's dangerous for, two ways that I might warn. Having different messages, we all vote differently, getting in public fights on our forums, but number two, I think it would give even us an advantage from someone that might run against us in the future or future councils. We would have a little bit, an advantage to communicate with the public while we are campaigning. And I think that puts some questions of ethics involved. And I wouldn't like to see somebody have one more advantage over someone else on a city website. So I think a free forum would be something that I couldn't get behind, but private bios, backlinks and those types of things. Something else I'd like to see too, if someone were to click on me, I'd like for them to click on, oh, what's this, you know, what's this war two? Am I in war two? So then I don't have to call city staff. There might be a map there next to each one of our names with our ward. They'd be able to type in an address and see immediately. That would probably eliminate some phone calls. That's just a side note. But I think those are two warnings that might behoove us. Not that we may do it, but if we put this as an ordinance as is, future councils might take advantage of something like that. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings?
I think two things enter into this discussion. One of them is liability and the other is politics. Under liability, I think we, I learned a long time ago that we need to speak with one voice when we go to the public with any kind of controversial issues and not get caught in the trap of speaking individually about our opinions when council has already made a position statement. So therefore, I think having a blog, an individual blog for every councilman would open us up to a lot of problems in that regard. Secondly, politics. We are a political body and we are a strong council, form of government. The mayor has certain ceremonial duties in addition to his council seat, and those are involved ribbon cuttings and sometimes speaking for the city at events and so forth. So we already, we are already doing that. But, and the mayor and I had this discussion earlier, I don't have a problem with one designated individual giving a message to the city on established issues and updates and so forth of things that we've done. That person could be our city administrator. It could be our mayor if council decides, but, or it could be our public relations person. But I don't think that having every individual council member on the website with their political views, which all of us probably have a little bit of different take on most everything, I don't think that's really a good idea. I personally have a council page on Facebook and I try to keep that updated as much as possible. I respond to questions and I post things as they come about that we've done and try to keep people aware of what the city's doing from my ward and from the city as a whole. I would not be opposed to having a link to that on the website if that's council's wish to give an individual a chance to, to reach out to his constituents or her constituents. And that, but that to me is the only thing I would, I would think would be appropriate to do. And I guess just to end this discussion from my standpoint is, I can't, I can't vote for this, for this motion as presented as well. I would consider an amended motion or something that would address having a way to designate a person to be the spokesperson on the website for the city on issues that aren't under consideration or controversial or not established. So that's my, my take on it. I'd like to hear at some point also from the mayor as to what his, his goals and aspirations are in doing this. I don't think, I've seen any, so far, I don't think I've seen any controversial topics addressed, but I'd like to, like to hear that at some point during this discussion.
Councilmember O'Rear?
You know, the ironic thing about all this, at no time has anyone ever asked me what exactly I thought I might want to even put up there. A lot of projection about how I'm going to do something political or say something that was way off field. No one's ever asked me. To me, this is, it's a principled matter and also a way to communicate. Only thing I'm talking about is like with Councilmember Pinkerton. He and I share Poynsetia. I have the largest amount of Poynsetia. It would be something where I could literally put something, hey, we discussed at council meeting last night extensively about Poynsetia and here's what was discussed. It's nothing controversial, but people are making this into controversy and projecting on to me. And this, this isn't new. You know, you can't tell me what I'm thinking because only thing I want is access. And Councilmember Hutchings, I'll disagree with you. You know, we can't speak with one voice. We're seven people with seven different belief systems. We were raised seven different ways. We're going to think differently sometimes. I would never in my life ever get on to any forum and say anything negative about you. That's not proper and I like you. But I can't, I can't go with the pick one person to speak for everyone because I can't, I don't, I don't speak for my children. I don't speak for my wife. I don't, I speak for me and that's what I want to do. But in light of hearing everything, mayor and council, I'd like to postpone to this item to the next committee of the whole meeting on February 25th and rework this to the satisfaction of more people on this. So I would be more than happy to do that, but I would like to postpone the item to the next committee, the whole meeting on February 25th.
Second? I have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear to postpone this item with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. If you will hold on just one moment, please. Let me consult with the rules here. Yes, this item is debatable. Discussion? I have here from our city attorney.
Sure. I just have some, I'm not going to give legal advice regarding the proposal. I don't want to try not to do that during an open session. I would just want to stress to council, you need to be very careful with approaching this issue. There's been a great deal of litigation throughout the country when it comes to social media and elected officials' use of social media. And a lot of the times, the litigation involves the First Amendment. And it all comes down to whether the city's websites or their social media pages allow for public to comment on those pages. Inevitably, particularly with controversial issues, you're going to get negative comments that you do not want anyone to see. And, and some people will keep driving the issue harder and harder and inevitably you want to try to censor or get rid of those comments. Well, that creates First Amendment issues. And I would stress to council that approaching this issue, I think is a, is a wise thing for council to do. And I want to dovetail on what Mr. Pinkerton was, was, I think advocating for was a social media policy. That is something I would recommend this council to consider. And that's going to help Mr. Campbell out, and since he's our IT person, on how to manage all of our social media websites. I think a social media policy would be in the best interest of the city. And I would, I would urge council to go that route if they, they want to do that. And maybe since there's a pending motion to lay on the table, it may be that we come back and consider maybe a social media policy instead of an ordinance. I don't think an ordinance is necessary for, for social media regulations. And I think this can be accomplished through a policy that's adopted by council. But I do want to stress that this is a sensitive issue that gets litigated quite frequently and we need to be careful about how we approach it.
Can I clarify one point regarding comment? The website for the city is not what I would say is traditionally defined as social media and there's no place for comment on the website. We're not required to provide a place to comment on that, on that website. Is that correct?
No, you're not. Most of the time, it's, and here's another concern I've got. If you, if you, and Ms. Rocha mentioned that earlier, if, if the website directed someone to go to an individual member's council page, it is very important that that, that page specify that this website is not at all associated with the city of Simpsonville. Because once the city adopts a policy or adopts a certain website as its, as its own, then you can be held liable for what goes on the website. And so that's what, and that's why it's, we need to be very careful.
Okay. Thank you.
Any templates of social media or policies from other towns, municipalities?
Actually, I have, I have do.
So the motion that's on the table right now is a motion to postpone to the next committee of the hall. Is there discussion from council? I am opposed to postponing this item. I'm sorry, did somebody? Councilmember Hutchings?
Question of our attorney. What is, if we adopt a social media policy and one of our council members violates that, what's, what is the penalty for that?
That would be up to council to decide what kind of sanctions they may impose against a council member. Whatever.
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Pinkerton?
Again, that could be part of the policy. I, I'll go back to what I said and I appreciate the concern there. I think that we, maybe a question back to you is a recommendation from you as how we put a commission together to put that policy together. I don't think it should just be council. I think it should incorporate some, and my personal feelings is other members of the city staff as well, just to get some feedback because they're all involved in that. I don't know if you have any recommendations on that or not, but.
I'm going to raise a point of order here. I think it's important that this is not germane to the motion that is on the floor. The motion on the floor is to postpone this item and we're getting into social media policies and maybe we want to.
Responding to a comment.
Right at the moment, let's, let's stick to the postponement. So I am opposed to postponing this item or allowing an amendment to it for a later meeting. I think that what we should do is vote on this item and then if a council member wants to propose something else, they can put that on the committee of the hall at the next meeting as opposed to trying to rework this thing. I think we should go ahead and continue to the vote. So I'm opposed to the postponement. Counsel? Okay. On the motion to postpone this item to the next committee of the hall, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. No. All right. Can I get a roll call vote for that, please? Clerk Clark?
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes.
Councilmember Rup?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Rocha?
No.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
No. That motion carries by a vote of seven to three. The item is postponed.
Four to three.
I'm sorry, seven to three, four to three. I've been saying seven to zero so much all evening. So it is, it carries by a vote of four to three and that item is postponed to the three, and that item is postponed to the next committee of the whole meeting. Item eight, executive session. We have on our agenda to enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter in the administrative department, to receive legal advice on pending litigation, and to receive legal advice on our Freedom of Information Act FOIA matter. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Councilmember Rup?
Mayor, I move that council moves into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rup with a second by Councilmember O'Rear to enter into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Now, before we go into executive session pursuant to state law, I am required as the presiding officer to make the following announcement. Simpsonville City Council has approved a motion to enter executive session. During this session, we will discuss the following matters: a personnel matter in the administrative department, legal advice on pending litigation, and legal advice on a matter related to the Freedom of Information Act FOIA. No voting will take place during the executive session. Upon coming out of executive session, council may reconvene the meeting to take action on matters discussed during executive session. At this time, we are in executive session. Council has left executive session and has reconvened in public session. Members of council, I move to accept the planned retirement from Administrator Graceley. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the mayor with a second from Councilmember Rocher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Members of council, I move to form an executive search committee composed of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, Councilmember Hutchings, Administrator Graceley, and HR manager Ashley Clark to search for a replacement as city administrator.
Second.
I have a motion from the mayor with a second from Councilmember Rup. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes all of our business for this evening. If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.